We're live from New York.
Good evening. Hi, welcome.
We're ready.
We're doing a thing.
We are, we are ready. You caught us off guard. All right, we're waiting for some guests to walk into our room. Hi, everybody. I'd like to call the Monday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two school board meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Weber.
Here.
Inspector Roche.
Here.
Inspector Lala Burdi.
Here.
Inspector Aaron.
Here.
Inspector Felton.
Here.
Inspector Walker.
Here.
Chair Diaz.
Here.
At seven present at six oh two.
Thanks, great. Um, if we could all stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I heard some little kid voices back there.
I did, I did too. All right, so first up is our approval of our meeting agenda in minutes, and I'm looking for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for tonight, as well as the meeting minutes from the committee of the whole, um, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, and the school board meeting minutes from February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. And just like that, we are at our favorite part of the night.
Yay.
I'd like to welcome Teresa Starkman, principal of Lincoln Center, and her guests.
Thank you, thank you, Board of Education, and Superintendent Zambrino and Superintendent, uh, Dr. Webb. It's so exciting to be here, um, to be able to kind of showcase Lincoln Center. Last time I was here, I brought fifth graders, and they got to talk to you, and this time we have our youngest learners to talk about community and the things that they're working on in their classroom, and how important school community is to them. So I have Kristen Sanders, one of my wonderful five kindergarten teachers, and then, three friends who will introduce themselves as they get to speak. Thank you.
All right, so we have been working on, are you okay if I go first? Okay, so we've been doing a unit on community helpers, and we want to ensure that the kindergartners at Lincoln Center know that people make decisions on their needs and wants within their community. And so this year, my class has been doing a wonderful job at making connections to not just me as their classroom teacher, but to the other staff in the building, and that has been a huge part in all of my students' lives this year. And so I have three friends who want to tell about a person in the building who they've really attached to.
Oh, great.
Okay, you ready? Ready? Do you want them to come in front?
Yeah.
That would be great.
Okay, let's go in front.
Something.
As the volume will be the challenge, right?
Can we pull it forward, Dave?
You can come closer, too. Oh, we have a handheld, okay. Let's go as far as that'll. Okay.
You ready?
My name is Harper, and, um, we're in kindergarten, and we go to school at Lincoln Center, and we've been working on our community helpers.
Welcome, Harper.
And we, and I shared about, um, Mrs. Starkman.
And why is she your choice of a community helper? What does she do?
Because she helps our school.
Very nice. Thank you, Harper. All right, and then we have Sammy Harper. What's your name?
My name is Ben. And community is important. So we don't get hurt. And we say, sure, sure.
Who did you write about?
Miss Asagod.
And what does Miss Asagod do?
Yeah, I teach in schools, I'm some in fun stuff.
Very nice. Thank you, Ben. Okay, will you go up to stand by Harper? All right, my lady.
My name is Paulina. And community helpers, teachers, house, adding and reading. The girls in the office helps our, our best pets feel better.
We are lucky enough to have pets as part of our kindergarten classroom learning, and the girls in the office have also been doing double duty with vet-ish, um, dealing with vet jobs, and with extended stay for pets when they have to take a break out of our classroom. So they've been helping.
Sorry.
That's good.
Very nice.
Excellent.
That's great. That was amazing.
Wow.
Now we have to see if, if anybody has any questions for you. Does anybody have questions for Harper, or Ben, or Paulina?
Paulina, I have a question for you. What are the class pets?
There are animals.
What kind of animals do you have?
We have turtles, a dinosaur, a pig. A pig, a chicken.
That's your pig? Where are the chickens?
It's not a farm. Any other questions?
I wonder if all three of you could take a bow for us. Could you do that?
Do you know how to bow?
Do you know how? Ben, do you know how? Let me sho- let me show you. Just like this.
Take them.
On three. One, two, three. Oh.
And I, I know Harper, um, Harper is friends with my granddaughter Penny, because Penny used to go to her home for daycare. So Penny and Harper are good friends. So I'm so excited that you're here, all of you. It's so fun to see you. Thanks for coming and sharing with us. Oh, Dr. Webb, yes.
Yes, thank you.
I have a question for all three of you. You ready? What is your favorite part of the whole school day at Lincoln Center? Do you have like a favorite time during the day that's just your favorite moment? You do?
The teacher.
That's the best.
Try to top that.
What's your favorite pet, Ben?
The desk pets.
And Harper, what's your favorite?
New friends.
Oh, nice.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Now, before you go, just to make sure that you learned something, can you do me one more bow? On three, on three. One, two, three. Very good.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, parents, for sharing your precious kids with us.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you for coming.
She wasn't letting that go.
I don't, I don't think we can go on after that. Adjourned. I'm done, yeah.
Brian, you notice you didn't get the pig. She wasn't giving the pig up.
That was precious. Gotta have priorities.
It's adorable. Great. I lo- I love the reminders of, you know, the decisions that we make and who they impact.
Exactly.
Got a tough act to follow, Mr. Webb.
Yeah.
Fortunately, we have a one more report before I was coming up here.
Uh, so just wanted to highlight our public listening session submission that came in today. We had a great presentation, reflections from a district staff member who's also a parent in the district, about our COVID policies and urging the board and administration to really rethink and reconsider. If ever something similar happens in the future, knock on wood, but just really, um, asking that we rethink our policies, you know, when that time comes again. Great.
Great. All right, next up, our next report is the superintendent update for tonight, for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. And, uh, this is my last report to the board, so here we go. We have a handful of district news from across the district. First is about your favorite and mine for the last two years. Maybe not our favorite. It's COVID. It's COVID update. We want to keep everybody posted, even though, uh, we really have our procedures still in place. We have to continue with our reminders about good protocol each and every day. So, we rescinded our policy, the eight oh eight policy, with a lot of detail, but we are still following all of our Minnesota Department of Health and the CDC guidance. We still have quarantines that are required for positive cases. We're still asking all parents to report to our COVID coordinator, Nurse Shawnee, when your child gets COVID or is infected. So those things haven't changed, even though we have procedures in place. We also know that the CDC has, uh, their three level guidance out, and they use this low, medium, high, and they use a stoplight example, and we're right now at a lower level of transmission, a green level for Dakota County. We hope it never happens again, but it could in months ahead or a year ahead, where the level changes and we have to take more precautions at a medium and especially a high level. If we reach a high level, expect that our COVID district team would make a recommendation to our management team, our leadership team in the district, just like we've done over the last couple of years. Our management team would then make a recommendation to you as a school board for masking if we reach a high level again and their spread across, uh, the county and our state, that we will be coming back to you with that recommendation. So just a couple of reminders that we wanted to put in front of you again tonight. A couple of cool things today, just in our district, um, not only, uh, did we host the state math tournament, our math bowl, but we had our new superintendent, Dr. Brian Zambrino, be a guest judge with ten other guest judges, like Belinda Jensen from K eleven TV, and Leo Lewis, former Minnesota Viking, and Dr. Brian Zambrino. So, um, it was just a fun event. Uh, here's ten of the top mathletes, they call them, from across the state, and they had the toughest math questions that I've ever seen. So even the top kids with the toughest math questions, uh, on the first eight questions, even the best kids got like six of the eight correct. So, we've hosted this event, thanks to Luke Olson's leadership, for many, many years, and, uh, we have a professional day for all of our staff in the district, so it was a perfect day to host this tournament. We have a number of student celebrations. Uh, how about our boys' basketball team? A huge shout out to them. They play Thursday night, St. Patrick's Day, March seventeenth, at seven PM in our own gymnasium. We're in a finals, a section finals, they call it, against De La Salle. Should be a great game. A shout out to all of our wrestlers. Our boys' team received the academic gold honors. And our girls' state, we had Ella and Kashawn play second and fourth at the state tournament. So shout out to all of our wrestlers. We have a shout out for our girls' gymnastics team, being academic silver award winners. A shout out to our all-state academic dance team as well for their team award. A shout out to all of our community helpers and really our city partners. They get to come down here to City Hall and tour all of the emergency vehicles, uh, South St. Paul Police and Fire. We have fun things that happen just in our own classroom, too, where a park ranger will come in, and you can imagine the kids that we had here tonight interviewing our park ranger. So just some wonderful moments in our schools. We had an eighth grade, uh, language arts lesson, which was really a theater lesson led by Mr. Holson, about how to read all the different aspects of a play, and this current version was The Diary of Anne Frank. So a bunch of cool things continuing to happen in the schools. We also have a theater event coming up and the Laramie Project for March twenty-fifth and, uh, twenty-sixth as well. So we have both in-person and now, thanks to the pandemic, we have livestreamed theater, which has been part of our history the last two years. To recap, a couple of closing dates. We have some important dates, March twenty, uh, twenty-fourth and the seventeenth. We have Family Connections Day, so March seventeenth and the twenty-fourth, Family Connections. We're like family conferences for our elementaries. And then we have Spring Break, March twenty-eighth through April first. If you ever need any of these materials, you can follow this tree, go onto our website, go to our district, the school board, and get all of our meeting minutes and agendas. We'll go back to you.
Great. Actually, if you could stay there for just a few moments, um, the board, as that was your last superintendent report.
That was it?
For this district.
Over and out.
We really, we really wanted, um, to thank you again for everything that you've done for this district. Your care, commitment, the warmth you've brought to families, to staff, uh, to all of us as we have rotated through boards. You've welcomed every new generation in, um, with just kindness. So, thank you, and we do have something for you, that we can present. Um, I'll, I'll do Chris. And then, um, Chris Walker, who is just so eloquent in his words, along with, uh, John Roche, also equally.
Well, Linda did a very good job of starting off. Um, I, I want to take the time to, on behalf of the board and the entire district, to thank you for your, your twelve years of leadership, all of the teaching that you've done over those years, and, um, just the, being such a strong leader. And also, want to wish you the best for whatever the, the years have for you coming up, and know that now if we say, "Go jump in the lake," we're meaning it in a good way.
Not like all those other times.
You live on a lake, so yeah.
There you go.
So, just want to wish you the best for your, uh, for your upcoming.
Yeah, it's been a, uh, a treasure, and our community here is a treasure, and our schools are a treasure. So, um, John, did you want to say something?
I do. Um, you know, you welcomed Monica and I onto the board a little over a year ago now, and I think anyone who steps onto the school board has no idea what they're in store for. It's a very different job than what you perceive that from the outside. Um, but I really, from, you know, want to thank you for, at every part through this journey, you made this a collaborative process. We were on a team together, and, um, I think sometimes when you're facing leadership, that is not always how that feels, but, um, you always made us feel that we were a part of that team. You were always accessible to us. And that kind of steadfast leadership and your commitment to education has been really remarkable, and
Thanks.
I appreciate being on your team.
Thank you, and what a great team it's been. So, I always say we have the best school boards, and we have for twelve years. We've had wonderful school boards, and we've learned and evolved during my twelve years as a school board practice. We, uh, have the finest leadership team that I've gotten to work with over twelve years, and we've evolved and grown as well, and keep, kept learning. The best assistant in the state, uh, that keep, uh, that really is so much glue behind the system for everything in air traffic controlling in the district. We have great teachers, great pairs, great cooks and custodians. We just have an outstanding staff. And I, it is special school district six. I got asked today, why isn't it a special school district and not an independent school district? And I just wanted to say, oh, because we're special. That's it. But seriously, uh, yeah, we have contiguous borders. But South St. Paul will always be special to me, and always be a special home for me. And, uh, thank you for making it feel like home for twelve years.
And I think we have something for you that, uh, reflects that.
Okay. Not gonna jump out at him.
He's not a class pet. No. I think because what you just said about how this is always your home, um, we wanted to give you something that represented that, and I don't know if you can get in on this shot here.
Yeah, let's bring it up closer.
Yeah.
Like this.
If you could, yeah, come in.
Once a Packer, always a Packer. How great is that? So, thank you. Thanks for twelve incredible years.
You may be leaving us, but we're not leaving you.
All right, I won't leave you either. And as I spent the whole day with Dr. Brian Zambrino, just what a class act. And just what a wonderful next superintendent for South St. Paul. Just know that this whole week, we'll be busy handing off, and we've been preparing for the last several weeks. Just that smooth handoff. We'll continue to do that, uh, in the days and weeks to come. Lisa's busy filling his calendar with school visits and great things, um, but we're excited to get him rolling and rolling well and get started, so, thanks again.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Dave. All right, more business. So moving on to the policy section of our agenda. This is the third meeting that our policy seven oh two has been on the agenda and is up for approval. Oh, yes.
Uh, we have consent items.
Sure did. Let's go back. Uh, so again, once again, consent items are items that come through each meeting, don't need much discussion. There are things, you know, bills payable, claims, our staffing report. So do I have a motion for the approval of our consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Now, we're on to policy approval. So again, third meeting for policy seven oh two, it's been on the agenda, um, and is now up for approval. So I'm looking for a motion for the revisions to the fund balance policy seven oh two.
So moved.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. And we have no business items in our agenda, and it's informational items now for the board. Wow. No budget stuff? No. No? That'll come the next couple meetings. All right, let's start. Wendy.
Well, the first thing I wanted to mention, I know Dr. Webb mentioned it in his superintendent's report, was the, with our theater department, uh, the Laramie Project, which is the grade nine through twelve spring theater performance, which will be March twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth. Tickets are available on sale now. You can order them online. For more information, go to the website under activities and hit theater. So it should be, should be a really good, good event. And I also attended the basketball game last Saturday at the high school. It was so much fun. It was just absolutely unbelievable. I had the most wonderful time. And I want to put a huge thank you out to all of the visitors that supported our boys. Our, our side of the gym was full. Great, great parent support, community support. And thank you to, uh, everyone who was working at the, at the entrance and those types of things, and the community police officers that were there assisting everything, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful, great job. And I, I super thank our players for, for their great performance, and looking forward to the game again this Thursday night. And also, on a personal note to Dr. Webb, I was very fortunate, Dave, to be on the search committee when you came to our district and we interviewed you. To this day, I can still remember the phenomenal job that you did when we inter- when you interviewed with us that night, and we, and we supported you. So I wish you the best of everything in the future for you and your family. And I consider you a friend, Dave, so always here for you, anything you need, don't ever hesitate to call. So, congratulations on your retirement and I'm su- I know we'll see, see you again in the future. That's not a problem, so. And so, good thing, Brian, we welcome you as our new superintendent. It's truly an honor to have you both here with us tonight, so thank you so much. And of course, Lisa, too. You've just been just a godsend to our district, so that's like the best table over there. Thank you, all three. Have a, have a great evening. Be safe.
Great, press.
Well, yes, again, congratulations, Dr. Webb, as we said earlier, and Brian, this will be my official welcome to you to, uh, to the district on your first day. We're glad that you're here, and, uh, I wish you the well, or wish you the best, uh, working with us down the road, so, thank you for being here.
Because we're allowed to work, is what he means. Yeah, I was, that's funny, that I was kind of thinking that, I'm in my sixth year now, and I'm thinking, I think I've been a thorn in Dave's side for, uh, at least five of those years.
It's enthusiasm.
And, um, but I, I, I agree with what, what John said, um, that you always made yourself available, um, to us and open to, you know, open to talk, and, uh, it's very apparent that you cared very much about South St. Paul and the people here. And so, um, it's a bittersweet ending, um, and I, I just wish you and your family all the best.
Thank you.
And, uh, also, I was at the game on Saturday, and, uh, talk about exciting. Good grief, and I'm not a huge sports fan, but, oh, wow, they just shook the rafters, and, uh, that was so fun. But one, one thing that came to my mind, and I think you and I talked about it, Linda, was remembering that these, um, athletes are students first. And that when we talk about them, and I'm going, I'm going to do this myself, it's up to you what you want to do, I want to refer to them as student athletes, so that we don't forget that piece, because that can get overlooked in the enthusiasm and in the, you know, excellent athletic ability that these young men have. So just, just, I, I congratulate them, I wish them well in the future, and, um, let's main, let's keep that priority that they are student athletes. Thank you. Phil.
I wanted the last word, so could I defer for, I gotta get the last word in here.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sure. Always something with this guy. I tell ya, I sit next to him now for.
Always something.
They're farther away each day, though.
No, 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 it's all, it's all good. Um, so yeah, I mean, to, to Dr. Webb, um, I will never forget the first phone call. I myself was surprised that I got elected to the school board, and so, when he called, and he's like, "Congratulations, welcome to the team," and I'm like, okay, I don't, I still don't know what that means, but I, I will figure it out. Um, and so, yes, you just always have been so kind and so welcoming. And, you know, responding to, to random late-night texts and, um, all the funny GIFs that I like to send. And, and Dodgers Zambrino, I don't have your cellphone yet. It will come.
She's been asking for it, I just want you to know.
And so, I can, you can then, my, my wit and weary about, you know, GIFs that I like to send. But yeah, so just, you know, thank you so much. I just appreciate, you know, all the, the teaching that you still continue to do to, you know, and the enthusiasm you have for our community, um, and you will be greatly missed. So never think that, that you weren't, um, and yeah, and for the rest of them, um, I'm going to the game on Thursday.
Good.
I will be there.
Yeah, we, me too. Bubba said it was as loud as a Timberwolves game. Bubba said it was as loud as a Timberwolves game, so bring your earplugs.
Hey, man, that's, that's, that's exciting news, um, to hear. So, so yeah, so that's it for me. John?
Great, it's John.
Um, congratulations to the doctor's tables, uh, over there, uh, to both, um, as we're a part of this transition right now. Um, the board took a training last week and, uh, there is something that really, uh, kind of rang true for me and that was pointed out to us. Um, but even though we have one position changing, this is also the opportunity for a lot of change within the district and for all of us to reconsider our roles. And so I just ask the public for, um, grace and time through that transition and for everyone to kind of, be ready to welcome and be excited for the changes to come. And the same goes for you, Dave. You have exciting changes ahead of you and, um, want to congratulate you on that. And, um, that's got to feel very, very exciting. So, thank you.
And I suppose after, I can, I can go before him. I, I suppose with the, the weeks and weeks of the buys, it will be nice to get to Friday night and to say, this is, this is my life now. This is where I am and my ideas for moving forward. Um, we'll be excited to hear about those plans. So make sure that you keep us in the loop and excited to, um, as we bring on, um, a different perspective. And, and we were talking about this, you and I, uh, Dave, this week about, or last week, about what the district needs. And what the district needed twelve years ago was you. And how excited we are to bring on Dr. Brian Zambrino, because that's what the district is needing now. And, um, that you have been able to work together, um, really behind the scenes. I don't know how many people know that while Dr. Zambrino was, was still in Minneapolis, that he was, you know, taking calls and planning and, um, meeting. So that it's been just such a great, um, great thing to see, the partnership. So I will let Bill go because I know he's been waiting.
Well, Dave, do you remember the first time we met? And by the way, Dave offered me a piece of cake if I come to the celebration, two pieces if I don't. But do you remember the first time we met? It's twelve years ago now. And where it was?
Was it in the hallway at the high school?
Exactly. Where else would you see me? The hallway by the gymnasium. And I took you around and showed you pictures of myself and my sons and everything else and bragged about how we're family here in South St. Paul and, um, you know, never knowing that I would be sitting up here someday and, you know, but I've made other bad decisions too. You know, we'll get on with those. But, you know, my question is, Dave, uh, is it fair to Brian to put him through the same thing that I put you through twelve years ago? Keep in mind, I found twice as many things to show now than I did then. Do you think it's fair that, that he should go through that baptism also?
What I, what I like about you, Bill, is that, um, you're always about the best for the most. So when, if you get past those first initial layers, the core of what you bring. The core of what you bring is exactly what our district needs every day. The best for the most. And I like your vision. And I'm excited about you bringing that to Dr. Zambrino.
So that is a yes?
Yeah, I'd say yes, actually.
Okay. Everybody, you know, document this. This is pie day and Dave said yes to Bill. Congratulations, Dave. And I know you have my support. If there's anything I can do and I mean it sincerely, you know, don't hesitate. And, uh, you know, I'll do my best to transition you into what retirement's like. I have fifteen years of experience now, so, um, I, I can be somewhat of an expert. But, uh, Brian, look forward to a treat.
I'm in.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
And I would like to give him a standing ovation.
Absolutely.
It's been an honor.
Thanks.
All right. So that is it for our agenda tonight. I'll.
Oh, I was also at the basketball game. And I agree with Nikki, it was so much fun.
What's that, Bill?
I was at the basketball game and I agree with you, it was so much fun.
It was.
And I started thinking of how many, how long I've been going to basketball games here. And if anybody guessed sixty-seven plus years, they would be right. That I have been attending basketball at South St. Paul. So, but it was, it was, and I'm going Thursday.
Yeah, I already got my tickets.
Me too. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Monday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
So moved.
Second. Wonderful. Uh, any discussion? And that motion carries. So the meeting's adjourned at, nope, can't see it.
Six thirty-seven.
Six thirty-seven PM. Thanks. I might need a little one right here.